One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are we doing roll call first or are we asking for a unanimous, take the roll call first?
Yeah, to prove you're fine.
Okay, prove it first. Roll call please.
Mr. Alt, Mr. Beistel, Mr. Benz.
Here.
Mr. Carson.
Here.
And then Mr. Frye.
Here.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes. Mrs. Smith. Mrs. Love.
Here.
Julie Donovan. Jake Smithula.
Well, the record show that Mr. Beistel is ill. Mr. Alt is hoping to arrive a little bit later. And Mrs. Rhodes is unable to get here due to the weather conditions. However, she has expressed a willingness to participate by telephone.
Can we have a unanimous, I guess, motion to allow Mrs. Rhodes to attend the meeting by telephone?
And waive the three-day advance notice.
And that. Motion, Mr. Polakowski, second by Mr. Frye. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, one's third across.
Vincent. Chris, do you want to patch her in?
Do we do citizen comments?
We'll wait till we get her patched in, we'll do citizen comments.
She'd have a secret password.
We need to recognize her attendance to note the time that she got in.
She'd be Skype her. We'll FaceTime her.
I don't think she knows how.
I think she doesn't know. Maybe she still wants to flip.
Hello, Mrs. Rhodes. This is Vincent from the school board. Give you on my cellphone.
Ask her to test.
Can you hear?
Yeah.
Can you hear our voices?
Can you hear voices?
Hold on, let me get into the other room for us once, when the TV will watch the tape about the, you know, the kids in Florida. Okay, go ahead and try that again.
You see, Mrs. Rhodes, are you able to hear us?
I can't really make out what you're saying.
Can you hear?
Mrs. Rhodes, are you able to hear us now?
Yeah, I can hear chat.
Okay, so we'll ask everyone to speak up as the meeting progresses. Let the minutes show that Mrs. Rhodes joined the meeting electronically at 7:05. Citizen comments. I have no comment cards this evening.
Minutes.
It's recommended that the board approve the minutes of the January 11th, 2018 discussion meeting and the January 18th, 2018 voting meeting.
I can hear the talking, but I can't make out what you're saying.
Mr. Pollard, can you adjust a little bit? Maybe put her in front of a speaker.
Can you set that up?
I can't really, Vincent, I can't really make out what you're saying. I mean, I hear that you suggest talking, but I can't make out what you're saying.
All right, Mrs. Rhodes, can you hear now?
It's a little bit louder than I can hear.
Is your microphone?
Chris, can you put her like right on that speaker? Would that feed back too much?
Now, I can hear Vincent, when he said you could hear me, I can hear you too.
All right, we're going to try a different speaker setup. Standby, please.
Okay.
Mr. Pollard, thank you. How about now, Mrs. Rhodes?
Yeah, I can make out what you're saying, that you want to go kind of read it just close and have it be the votes in the best way.
All right, very well. So again, it is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the January 11th, 2018 discussion meeting and the January 18th, 2018 voting meeting.
Have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Polakowski makes the motion. Mr. Frye seconds. Discussion?
Yes.
Voice vote?
Voice. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Accounts?
It is recommended that the board approve the treasurer's report and accounts payable report for January 2018.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Carson makes the motion?
Second.
Mr. Polakowski seconds. Roll call.
This is the treasurer's report.
Roll call.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes. Motion carries. Board reports?
Your student report is attached to your board docs items there. Unfortunately, our student representatives were otherwise engaged tonight. But we have YEA news for February that you can take a look at, a couple of things that are upcoming. Breakfast with the Easter Bunny on March 17th. Bunny Hop for Autism on March 28th. Learning for Life will be held at Hempfield Park. So that is news from the YEA. Also, some board notes that are there for your perusal. We'll highlight those as soon as they come up on my computer. October's VOTEC Scotty Scholars were Roman Karns and Cody Pickens. December's Scotty Scholar was Hannah Clark. January's Scotty Scholar, Justina Fasano. January's Spirit of Southmoreland was Jake Smithula. Several of our students have entered their two-dimensional artwork into a drawing competition held by Slippery Rock Art Department. This is meant to engage high school art students through social media. They've entered their work on Instagram with the attached hashtag #SRUDraw2. So if you have a chance to look at Instagram and type in that hashtag, you can see some of the work that our kids are doing. BOTS IQ announcement. Competition season is quickly approaching with less than a month to go. We're working on improving last year's robots named Anthrax and Fury. Mark your calendars and come watch our students compete against area high schools with our 15-pound battling robot competitions. Saturday, March 17th at Founder's Hall, Westmoreland Community College. Friday and Saturday, April 13 and 14 at the Cal U Convocation Center. Kickoff is at 10:00 a.m. and it is free to the public. We would like to thank the following for their student support, the school district and administration, Penn State Tool and Die, Reynolds Machine Company, and TechMet Chemical Milling for helping to sponsor the BOTS IQ program. The high school alpha took fourth place in their final competition, beating Greensburg Central Catholic, Jeanette and Derry. There is an attached list of SHS musical fundraisers and events. I understand the musical ticket sales are going very well. They've sold over $2,000 worth of tickets at their first sale. So we're certainly looking forward to their production of Cinderella. We have four students represent Southmoreland District Band at Fox Chapel. Quay Akins, Shelby Bryan, Isla Greenwald, and Dylan Opalinski. They did a remarkable job for performance and in the audition process. And Quay, Shelby, and Dylan have advanced the regional band at Plum. 16 student representatives from Southmoreland were selected for Fay West Honors Band. Those students are Isla Greenwald, Jamie Cochrane, Morgan Brown, Brianna Demogal, Shelby Bryan, Kaylee Buckholz, Kaylee Whitlatch, Jasmine Frost, Abigail Springer, Dakota Kaufman, Quay Akins, Josh Lanky, Jennifer Firestone, Dylan Opalinski, Grace Vivio, and Ian Zimmerman. They performed with over 100 other musicians on Friday, January 26th. One student was selected for PMEA District Choir, and that was CJ Medley from our district. On January 28th, 40 music students went to the Benedum Center to see Wicked the Musical. And the students are grateful for the opportunity to be able to partake of those events. Two students will represent Southmoreland District Orchestra at Gateway, that will be Isla Greenwald and Jennifer Firestone. And finally, the Southmoreland Musical is well underway. Tickets go on sale next week for the public at the cost of $12 per adult and $10 per senior citizen. Students and staff are putting in long hours to bring the story of Cinderella to life on the stage. We've been holding many fundraisers to try to raise funds and look forward to hosting the Southmoreland Royal Character Breakfast on Saturday, March 10th at the high school. The musical website has a lot of additional information, including cast and leadership information, box office information, fundraising and event details, and more. And that would be under www.southmorelandmusical.net. Pending board approval, they would like the opportunity to establish the Music Theater Club for any student interested in being a part of the Music Theater Program moving forward. And that concludes the student report.
CWCTC report?
Our JOC meeting is next week, so I didn't have a report.
The IU report, I brought pamphlet on the E-Academy if anybody wants to take a look at it. April 8th is the IU Foundation Bingo Bash. And we did, we were able to furlough some more part-time classroom assistants back. We approved a lot of our agreements with districts on support services, different kinds of support services. We did get another donation from the HOG group, which is the Harley Owners Group. Every year they donate a good bit of money. And they're able to buy a lot of learning stuff, like tools and teaching tools with it that help tremendously.
That's a clear view.
Yeah. And they're in the process of renaming everything after their work up there, so it's looking good there.
PSBA, ah, PSBA report?
Mrs. Rhodes, PSBA report?
Mrs. Rhodes, you there?
Yeah.
PSBA reports?
Um, here. If you want me, hold on, I can get it up by that. This is a short little report that we have to do with the governor with the way they're treating, because, you know, they're going to be changing that. Yes, Governor Wolf refused to submit a new Republican drawn map of Pennsylvania's congressional districts to the state's high court because it uses the same unconstitutional partisan tactics that were struck down in a gerrymandering case. Wolf's office did not say whether he would submit his own map to the court. Democrats claim that the current map that was submitted would clearly benefit Republican candidates. And the Republicans claim they follow the court line, the court line drawing benchmarks, eliminating dozens of municipalities and county divisions and creating a more compact district. The governor will notify lawmakers of his specific problems with the proposed map and leave open the possibility of working with the legislators to submit a consensus map by Monday's deadline. Now, I did see on the news, and I didn't get a chance to hear what the report was. It might very well have been what I just told you. So let's hope that they get this map drawn and move on. Because we don't know how that's going to impact our school districts, or the school districts in the 18th congressional district. So hopefully, everything will be, they'll get this done in a timely fashion. But, you know, look what we're dealing with. That's the end of my report for tonight.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Yeah, a short report on my part tonight because I'm going to allow most of my time to go to the high school for their performance report. But first of all, our hearts certainly go out to the victims and families of yesterday's massacre at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. Coincidentally, you know, for several weeks now under Officer Kiefer's leadership, Southmoreland has been making plans to train teachers during the in-service days at the beginning of the 2018-19 school year. Trainings have already been planned to include a program entitled Stop the Bleed and another program on active shooter training. So Mr. Kiefer already has those scheduled and has instructors lined up and everything else. So it was a tragic coincidence, but coincidence nonetheless, that we had heard of this shooting yesterday right when we were in the midst of planning a training for our staff. The Head Start program sent me an email from Ruffstale. They've attempted to make improvements to the outside fenced playground at Ruffstale Elementary School and have met with limited success in doing that. But they have received some health and safety money through a grant. And they're requesting permission to tear out the old playground and put in a new one because parts are becoming very scarce for the existing playground. And Head Start has a good many safety regulations that they have to deal with regarding playgrounds. So they wanted to use the grant money to replace the existing playground. So there will be an agenda item later requesting approval for them to do that. Throughout the last month, I did attend federal programs training, Westmoreland County Healthcare Rate Stabilization Consortium meetings, Superintendent's Association meetings, Central Westmoreland Career and Technology Center Professional Advisory Council meetings, and Westmoreland County Workforce Development meetings. Throughout the last month, we were also able to settle agreements with the Service Employees International Union. We're continuing to deal with the winter weather. To delay or not to delay, that's always the question, right? And we'll probably need to present a calendar revision to you next month to deal with the recent spate of snow days. And finally, we're continuing to work on the transportation request for proposal and hope to have a recommendation for you for next month. So that concludes my portion of the report. And I'll turn the microphone over to Mr. Croftcheck and Ms. Kuhar. And I'd invite you down front to see their presentation.
Hello, hey. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss our annual report to the school board and to the community, 2017-18. We reflect primarily on what we did well and what we need to improve from the last school year, the '16-'17 school year at the high school. Southmoreland High School, just a couple of things to mention. Again, several years in a row, we have been recognized by the U.S. News and World Report in their America's Best High School award, again with the bronze. We also, secondly, were accepted into the National Math and Science Initiative as we mentioned and presented to you earlier in the school year. And as Mr. Masha had mentioned, we were also part of hosting 20 central office administrators and school principals from Quebec, which was a really enlightening, enriching, enrichment experience as well for us to learn all about their system and share our practices. Southmoreland High School, let's begin with what '16-'17 looked like in terms of the cross-section of information, number of students, 552. We had 40 teachers, two guidance counselors, four paraprofessionals, and myself. And last year, Dr. Saint Amont welcomed onboard Ms. Tracy Kuhar as the assistant principal here this year and has been doing an excellent job. 49% economically disadvantaged and 10.14% special education population. How are we doing? Let's start right off the bat. This will be, in fact, the last year of this index number. They're changing over to the Future Readiness Index in the following year, in 2018. We started off on a rocky road. We've discussed this before and we've had to confront our realities overall. This year, we dropped slightly in the overall composite score from 83.4 last year to 79.4. Approximately 16, I'm sorry, 14 of the 17 schools saw slight decreases in Westmoreland County from last year's number. But we made large progress since the beginning of this, and we will talk about that later. Looking at our overall, where do we sit? Still pretty similarly to where we sat last year. And that is in that top quadrant of schools. We fell one place in Westmoreland County to 79.4, just below Ligonier. Penn Trafford as well as Belverna made great strides this year to improve. And as you can see in Fayette, we were all neck and neck there in terms of our performance numbers, falling just shortly behind Connelsville. If you look at the intermediate unit percentage of economically disadvantaged, if you see where we perform in comparison of that percentage, that is our largest demographic that is used in our performance gap closure measure. We are behind Ligonier, but a lot of our peers are actually performing at the bottom or lower portion of the county. Here's our exam data. An 18, 80s in the algebra and literature categories, 63.7 in biology. And we can discuss that in our achievements and improvements discussion. Our Advanced Placement five-year comparison, we had 188 exams. We had 107 students in AP courses and 37 students with a three or above. Our growth numbers, we finally hit some targets in algebra. We saw positive growth for the first time in a while. And these were all tied together in the long-range goals, as we said, programmatically. But in '17 is the first time we hit positive growth since PVOS came into play. Literature was very solid in its growth. Our three-year average was in dark blue, the highest category, despite a slight drop in 2017. We saw a three-year average in a number of 5.4. And just if you remember from prior years, this is our 10th grade group that gets assessed for growth. Biology, negative 11.9 three-year average as the composite score. Our critical reading, math, and writing in 2016, the SAT, as you can see, slightly higher than a prior year. And I like to put a comparison to 1990. Again, we did not have the writing, but in 1990, our composite score was 422 and 469. You can see where our math and critical reading stand in 2016. At the time that the data came out, '17 was not completely finished because they do it as a year, not as a school year. So what did we do well over the course of the year? Our reality, our accomplishments? We increased or maintained 21 of the 23 indicators that the school performance profile uses. We increased 10% since 2013 on our overall composite score with a high of 83.4 in 2015-16. So we took dramatic steps in taking all the components that were assessed on and making the necessary changes to improve our overall performance. 2012, we were at 69.8. So we took dramatic steps forward in a lot of the different categories. Our proficiency levels on our assessed areas have gone up in an upward trend overall. All our students' total proficiency in our three categories are nearly 80%, comparatively to 64.5% back in the 2008, 2007-8 school year that would have been. For the first time, and I say this because I'm looking at data from basically what I call the post-2002, the age of accountability in public education era. We've hit the 80% mark in two of three categories. So I try to provide some comparative numbers for you in our overall assessments. 2003-2004, if you look at our math data and our reading data, which is essentially your algebra and your literature data currently, 56 and 64. And I've used this every time. I've been at Southmoreland High School for 18 years. And as a teacher, in the audience of our faculty meeting in 2005-2006, and the principal said, 44.3% of our students are at grade level in mathematics. Now we can say that has doubled since 2006. 58.6. I like to use the comparative, about 5 out of 10 kids couldn't do math at their grade level. And 6 out of 10 couldn't perform adequately on a reading examination in 2005-2006. Now nearly 9 out of 10 do. So if you look comparatively, that was a very large accomplishment for the school. You know, when we look back over time, these are the numbers. And we have data going back, as again, to 2002. If you look, it's been an upward trend. In IU 7, we scored fourth in algebra, just behind Franklin Regional by just a slight difference. And we scored third in literature, just behind Norwin by literally a very small number. One thing that we really wanted to focus on, our college readiness index. We looked back last year as a staff and said that we were not at all happy with a college readiness index of 59.35. We saw a dramatic increase last year to 91.42 in the overall assessment. The number of students that score 15, 50, or above on the SAT exam is the... The number of students that score fifteen, fifty, or above on the SAT exam is the nexus of that number. So our kids are performing much more successfully on SATs to see that number increase. Our advanced placement coursework has doubled over the last ten years. We had seven courses in two thousand six, two thousand seven. We currently have fourteen. One time, my daughter's kindergarten soccer game was at Lynch Field in Greensburg, and the train came, and the entire game stopped, and all the kindergarteners just watched the train go by. It was the most exciting part of the whole game. If you look at the number of advanced placement courses, where we are on par with schools, Derry and ourselves are kind of the outliers in advanced placement courses, similar size. But if you look at our colleagues, our peers, Mount Pleasant and Yawk, for example, Mount Pleasant has six AP courses, Yawk nine. We really have a lot of opportunities for our kids to take these courses. We also have, which is developing into a really solid relationship with Non-Aloisius College, is dual enrollment, students taking courses which they're getting college credits for in physics, in English, and politics and government. So we're working to continue to get more courses enrolled in that. Our system has really developed over time. I stood in front of the board eight years ago and said, "We have to make some changes. We have to increase the rigor at Southmoreland High School, and we can no longer sort and select students in three different areas." And I started, we had general academic college preparatory curriculums, and if you were fortunate to be in college preparatory, you got to read and examine the more strenuous and rigorous coursework in the other courses you did not. We wanted to eliminate all the lower-level courses and integrate that and bring in more advanced placement in college in the classroom courses. In two thousand seven, a decade, we had twenty-six percent of our total courses were CP or AP, and in two thousand seventeen, that's fifty-nine percent of our classes are those curriculum, curricula, either college preparatory or advanced placement. We have a fluid forty-minute intervention enrichment schedule that is scheduled directly into the day. Every day, students have forty minutes to meet directly with their teachers for intervention or enrichment. We also have team planning. We're one of the few high schools probably in the IU that allows for team planning built in high schools. This is more of a common middle school practice, but at the high school level, we have it built directly into the school day for our core-level teams. And we continually use data. We're always looking at data. We don't go on our gut feeling. We want to see how kids are performing, how we can improve. Our outcomes are fluid. We're not sticking with the same thing that happened ten years ago. We're continually examining curriculum and continually examining changes that need to be made to adjust to the needs, the times, and what it is our students use or need, and we use formative assessment to assure that they're learning. With that said, we're not afraid to address our realities and our concerns. A lot of the data that I presented earlier, we had a very nice increase in the science area in two thousand thirteen, when we went from the PSSA to the Keystone. We saw a significant increase. We were really happy, and we thought we were doing some things right there, but we've remained pretty stagnant. In fact, as I said, we're in the eighties everywhere else. Now we're barely struggling to get out in the sixties in biology, which is our primary tested area. And that has remained stagnant for quite some time. Our growth in two of three areas has remained stagnant. Algebra, despite the fact that we have scored overall proficiency, which is really a one-time snapshot, if you look at our overall growth in algebra and biology, has been pretty low, and, you know, even a good excuse is still an excuse. But as you can see, there seems to be a sharp divide in most of the schools in terms of growth. Some of them are hitting it, you know, out of the park, and there's a bunch of them all kind of stuck in the same areas. So really, to wrap it up, and I wanted to bring this into a real simple summation of what this school year has been. Here we are in February, talking about last year's, that's just the nature of the data comes out in October. We all take turns a month at a time to really get into, you know, the nuts and bolts of what's going on, but I tried to wrap it up. Mr. Mashes says I talk too much. So I continue to reinforce the successful components of our past plans. We haven't gone through and got it. We have been doing the same thing since we stood in front of the board eight years ago. We're going to eliminate this, we're going to increase rigor. All right? Been saying that. We're going to have intervention. Mr. Pollard will attest. We tested the waters up and down for how that worked best. I think we finally found a system that works now, and we've used it for maybe the last three years. It works for the kids. It's productive, it's efficient, and that's a big time. And when you, when you can be with your teachers to get the extra time and support, that can only lead to success for our students. One thing that we looked at this year is the scope and sequence of the Science Department curriculum, six through twelve, more nine through twelve at this stage. We sort of have a gap year between seventh, eighth, and ninth grade. In seventh grade, eighth grade, I believe, you have physical science of some sort. Ninth grade, you have earth-space science, and then kids are taking life science in tenth grade. They haven't had life science, Vince, since sixth grade. So seventh grade, for kids, you know, a brain drain occurs over the course of time. So we plan to integrate more life science into the ninth-grade curriculum so that it builds upon their entry into biology as a standard tenth-grade course, because, you know, I think that's a big factor in why we haven't seen improvement. Kids have algebra, 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 they come to high school, algebra, and there's a consistency. Literature's all been pretty consistent, but we want to smooth that out, and I think that will pay dividends for our success in that area. And improvements in the Science Department. We really need to dive deep into PVOS and identify areas what needs the most improvement, and that's, you know, one kid at a time, and that's one report at a time, where are we seeing success? Where do we need to improve? That has been one of our goals that we've been working through over the course of this year. One thing that we saw some foresight on several years ago, and that is the career pathways model. We implemented that last year, sort of having a little bit of an idea that this is what we're going to be evaluated upon in the upcoming years as a high school. It's going to be a lot more of the career pathways. And so we have, with our program of studies, which will be uploaded on the website shortly as we begin scheduling, we provide our career pathways model. We also have been working in the development of an internship program that will be offered next year for the first time at Southmoreland High School, and we've also been working with the County Workforce Development Task Force. Dr. Molnar and I have been attending for quite some time with them, and hopefully we can join their objectives with our own individual objectives and make that a possibility for our kids. But on their own, our STEM department has already gone out and developed for next year. We're calling it Life After High School Internship Program. Hopefully, we can offer to a group of senior students. So with that, that concludes my annual report to the school board, and more than happy to answer any questions that you may have or comments. That's the percentage of students now in Pennsylvania. It's typically the number of students that are on free and reduced lunch. That is how we, the main determinant.
Can you hear us, Gail?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. We moved you a little closer.
Okay, that's good.
Do we need to mention that my club?
Yeah, let the record show that Mr. Bent's departed at about seven-twenty due to the fact that there's water pouring into his home at this time. So that was certainly an emergency worth his leaving for, but with Mrs. Rhodes on the phone, we still do have a quorum.
Business manager report?
Jim, I didn't know if you wanted to share the information about the governor's.
The governor's.
Right. And I have that under the treasures report. Well, Mr. Alt has arrived. Good at.
Makes a quorum. Makes a quorum.
We have Mrs. Rhodes on the phone.
Oh, okay.
Did you find it on your board docs, Jim? Okay, good. So do you want to just talk a little about that real quick?
Yes. On February six, Governor Walton, Liberty State budget addressed to the General Assembly. His thirty-two point nine billion dollar proposal is an increase of nine hundred and eighty-nine point eight million, or three point one percent over the current seventeen, eighteen state budget. Although education comes out well under his proposal with increases in basic ed and special education subsidies, we must remember it is a statewide election year, so fast budget approval will not likely happen. And with a full twenty-five percent of the budgetary increase to be funded by his re-proposed Marcellus Shell gas severance tax, there is significant doubt that the legislature will pass that. So whatever final budget is agreed upon, obviously with the removal of the extraction tax or severance tax, budget adjustments before final approval will have to be made. Under the governor's proposed budget, the initial effect on Southmoreland subsidies are as follows. Basic education funding is seeing a sixty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-five percent, sixty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollar increase. That's basically about seven tenths of one percent. Special education subsidy, there's an increase of fifteen thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars, one point oh-seven percent increase. Flat funding for Ready-to-Learn Grant at three hundred and fifty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars, no increase there. So total new projected dollars, if this budget would be passed as is, be eighty-five thousand sixty dollars, or roughly almost eight tenths of one percent.
Thank you, Jim. You're welcome.
Nothing to add to my confidential reports. Old business?
It's recommended that the board adopt the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school calendar as presented with a copy attached to the agenda.
Motion? Mr. Polakowski, second. Mr. Carson, discussion? Can you hear Mrs. Rhodes?
Second. Can I do that?
Yes.
Yes.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Yeah, I can hear you really good now.
Roll call.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, six for three absent.
Budgetary transfers?
It's recommended that the board approve the budgetary transfers as attached. These are the same transfers that we discussed last week.
Motion?
Don't move.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Mrs. Rhodes? Second?
Second.
Mr. Carson, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, six for three absent.
Budgetary transfers?
It's recommended that the board approve the budgetary transfers as attached. These are the same transfers that we discussed last week.
Motion?
Don't move.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Mrs. Rhodes? Second?
Second.
Mr. Carson, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, six for three absent.
Advertising for maintenance, custodial, and athletic supplies.
It is recommended that the board authorize administration to advertise for maintenance, custodial, and athletic supplies.
February 21st to 23rd, 2018, for three of our students who qualified for regional band. The students are Dylan Opelinski, Quay Akins, and Shelby Bryan. A copy of the request is attached to your board docs.
Can I have a motion? Mr. Polakowski? Mr. Fry, seconds? Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, six, three absent.
Budgetary transfers?
It's recommended that the board approve the budgetary transfers as attached. These are the same transfers that we discussed last week.
Motion?
Don't move.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Mrs. Rhodes, second?
Second.
Mr. Carson, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, six, three absent.
Advertising for maintenance custodial and athletic supplies.
It is recommended that the board authorize administration to advertise for maintenance custodial and athletic supplies.
Make a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Carson, second?
Second.
Mr. Polakowski, discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, six, three absent.
Memorandum of Understanding with Private Industry Council of Westmoreland Fayette for Pre-K Counts Classroom.
Yes, this was not something we talked about last week, and I apologize for that. I really thought that we had done this in August. And then I received a letter from the PIC asking if we were ever going to approve the MOU. And when I went back and looked, I realized that it was not on the agenda back in August like I thought it had been. What this is, it's a pre-K counts program. They rent one room at Southmoreland Elementary School for $9,000 a year. And then there's a lot of other things that are in there that just talk about how we do business together. It's actually the same MOU that we've had with them for the past several years, but they do need to have it renewed. So it's recommended then that the board approve the memorandum of understanding between the district and the Private Industry Council of Westmoreland Fayette for the operation of a pre-K counts program at Southmoreland Elementary School.
Make a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Polakowski?
Second.
Mr. Carson, seconds? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, six, three absent.
Replacement of Ruffsdale Elementary Playground.
It's recommended that the board grant Westmoreland Community Action Permission to remove the existing playground at Ruffsdale Elementary School and replace it with an updated playground that meets current safety standards and regulations.
Make a motion?
Don't move.
Mrs. Rhodes, second?
Second.
Mr. Polakowski, discussion?
Is there a cost to us?
No. They received a grant, so they're willing to tear the old playground out. The problem is, they're having trouble finding parts to replace the parts that are on that playground, which is about 20 years old. So they're willing to do that so that their kids have the use of it. So there's no cost to the district.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, six, three absent.
Executive session for personnel.
Make a motion to adjourn to recess for personnel?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Are we even doing more new business?
If possible. Did you have something to bring up?
I don't know. I can wait.
Okay.
Second? Mr. Fry, seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
I'll carry Mrs. Rhodes.
Do you want me to unplug Mrs. Rhodes?
Somebody make the motion?
Anyone? Gail and Mr. Carson?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed?
Ray.
Personnel?
It's recommended that the board approve early graduation for student EG01 of 2017-2018.
Motion? Mr. Polakowski, sir? Mr. Fry, seconds? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, six, three.
Retirement. No.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah. Oh, no, Mike left. One, two, three. Yeah, Mike left.
You have six with Gail.
Oh, with Gail.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Retirement of Payroll Secretary.
It is recommended that the board accept with regrets the resignation of Payroll Secretary Mary Jane Grimm for the purpose of retirement.
Motion?
Don't move.
Mrs. Rhodes, second?
Second.
Mr. Polakowski?
And with your permission, those of you who made in second of the motion, I would like to also have permission to post and advertise that as necessary. Are you amenable to that, those of you who made the motions?
Are you okay with that, Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resignation of Golf Coach.
It's recommended that the board accept the resignation of David Kiefer from his supplemental position of Head Varsity Golf Coach and authorize administration to post and advertise the position.
Motion? Mr. Carson, seconds? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Middle School Baseball Coach.
It's recommended that the board approve Gavin Sekorski as Head Middle School Baseball Coach at the supplemental salary of $2,857 for the 2017-18 school year.
Motion, please? Mr. Polakowski, second by Mr. Carson. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries.
JV Softball Coach.
It's recommended that the board approve Chris Brunson as the JV Softball Coach at a supplemental salary of $2,503 for the 2017-18 school year.
Motion? Mr. Polakowski? Mrs. Rhodes, seconds? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Assistant Baseball Coach.
It's recommended that the board promote Ryan Riffle to the position of Assistant Baseball Coach at a salary of $2,560.
Motion? Mr. Carson, second? Mrs. Rhodes, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Assistant Football Coach.
JV Baseball Coach.
I'm sorry, JV Baseball Coach.
It's recommended that the board employ Andrew Polakowski as the Junior Varsity Baseball Coach at the supplemental salary of $2,431 for the 2017-18 school year.
Motion? Mr. Fry?
Second.
Mr. Polakowski, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Assistant Football Coach.
It's recommended that the board approve the following assistant football coaches: Mark Kiefer, First Assistant at the supplemental salary of $5,222; and Mike Cavalier and Ron Frederick as assistant coaches at the supplemental salary of $4,413 for the 2018-19 school year.
Motion?
Motion.
Mr. Carson, second? Mr. Fry, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Middle School Softball Coach.
It's recommended that the board table this item this evening.
Volunteers.
Need a voice vote?
I need a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to table the Middle School Softball Coach. Mr. Fry? Mr. Polakowski, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Volunteers.
It's recommended that the board approve the following individuals as volunteers to be assigned: Jason Banimer, Scott Belzer, and John Lee.
Motion?
Don't move.
Second? Mr. Polakowski, discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries.
FMLA request.
It is recommended that the board approve an FMLA request for Kim Ermine Cafeteria employee beginning January 29, 2018, for approximately one month.
Motion? Mr. Carson? Mr. Fry, seconds? Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requests for extended unpaid leave.
It is recommended that the board grant an additional unpaid leave of absence for Sonia McNally through March 16, 2018, pending receipt of further information from Mrs. McNally.
Mr. Polakowski? Mr. Fry, seconds? Discussion?
March 16, yes.
The current one expires February 20.
The end of February. So we're giving her to the next board meeting.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Removal of Volunteer.
It's recommended that the board remove the name of Rick Firestone from the list of approved volunteers effective immediately.
Motion? Second?
Second.
Mr. Carson, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Retirement of Superintendent. It is recommended that the board accept the resignation of Superintendent Dr. John A. Molnar for the purpose of retirement, with his last day of employment being June 30, 2018, with regrets. Mr. Carson, second? Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
No. Yes, with regrets.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Citizens' comments. Motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to discuss a little bit more about the mass shooting in Florida yesterday and see what we can do to upgrade our security at all of our schools in efforts to support Mr. Kiefer and look into possibly hiring additional officers, armed officers, for each school and try to, just really try to upgrade the security for our district and the safety of the children and the staff faculty.
Would you, would the board like us to come back with a recommendation for next month as to how that might look?
Sure. Do we want to form a committee?
We would certainly appreciate some board input on that.
Is there a committee in place, or do we need to...
I think Mrs. Love could appoint a committee this evening.
I would be absolutely happy to. Mr. Carson, are you interested in chairing that committee? Mr. Polakowski?
Sure.
Anybody else want to join in on that? I certainly... Yeah.
Yeah, we'll put a team of teachers and administrators together tomorrow.
I think it's a good idea.
And we'll get something going. Mr. Fry as well.
Okay. Good, good stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Carson.
Amy, before we leave, I would like to mention something that I would like to get together with, and set up some times with administrators, and hopefully, some parents from the school district would be interested in also getting this anti-bullying committee off the ground. So I'm going to be working and seeing if we can get some dates put together and try to maybe talk about this a little bit more in our planning meeting next month. So I just wanted to pass that on, that I was kind of waiting until the weather got a little bit better. She hates to schedule meetings, have people come, or try to come when you might have bad weather and so forth. So that's why I was kind of waiting. So I think now maybe would be a good time to start, you know, getting this together and planning some meetings possibly for March. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
We can make that happen. Thank you, Mrs. Rhodes.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favors?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody ever opposes that. Nobody ever opposes that.
Gail, thank you for being present by telephone.
Well, thanks for setting it up. I appreciate it. I haven't gone down to look at the mess yet. I don't know if there is a mess, hopefully not. And I just hope things don't matter.